Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, March 9th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." (Music) 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 Well, thank you to the National Film Board. They provided the images for our "Oh, Canada" music video and to the Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. If you have not moved the minutes to the city council meeting held February 23rd, 2015, be adopted.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Yes, just a slight correction. On the last page of our minutes for Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance, it says in the sentence, "The alliance over the next three years will be traveling across the province and into the territories in B.C." I would strike "and" into the territories in B.C. because although the watershed flows out of B.C. and up into the Northwest Territories, that's not our jurisdiction. It's just provincial, so I'll just strike that from the minutes.
Okay, so I'll make that clarification. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. That's why we ask, so I'll get that clarified. So we'll move on for the adoption of the minutes as amended and Counselor McLean's motion. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We move on to the adoption of the agenda. Have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Thanks, Counselor Logan.
Move we adopt the agenda as presented?
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. And this brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting for any member of the community that wanted to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We do have a couple of types of things that you can't use this time for. If we have a public hearing, which you're going to see some of tonight, you have to wait to make your presentation during the public hearing. But otherwise, anybody that would like to come forward and raise a community issue or address council, anybody is absolutely welcome. Now, I see a bunch of students from GPRC here, and none of them are rushing the podium to come up to the front. But you and your friends and everybody in the community should know that this opportunity does exist. If there isn't anybody that was looking to come forward, there is. Please come forward, have a seat at the table, and you can introduce yourself into one of the microphones, and you can tell council why you're here. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're on. You're ready to go.
Yes, I'm ready.
So if you can just say your name for our records and tell council why you're here.
So I'm Katie Kramer, and I'm here to tell you about Special Olympics. I have a goal for Special Olympics and Winter Games in Curly.
Yeah.[290.22][290.22](Applause)
And that's about it.
Thanks very much, Ms. Kramer. So did you have a good time at the Special Olympics?
Oh, yes, I did. My mom is part of having out with the games, so my dad too, and yeah.
And do you think all the other people that attended had a good time?
Yes.
Good. Were there any questions for Ms. Kramer? Is there anybody that wanted to ask any questions? Counselor McLean?
I kind of, she might be, I don't know if she's leaving or whatever, but I'd like to see the medal. She's got the big medal on.
Oh, Counselor McLean would like to see your medal up close.
Thank you.
Yeah, very cool. There it is. There it is on the TV screen, too.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for coming and addressing council and letting us know how the games were, and thank you very much for representing Grand Prairie so well and bringing home the gold.
Thank you.
Thank you.[342.34][342.34](Applause) So as I said, I'm, well, I'm so glad that somebody came forward to use that. Otherwise, it would have been a really boring portion. And Katie, thank you so much for coming up and addressing council. As I said, that opportunity exists at every regular city council meeting. We make sure that there is time for the public to come forward to council. But seeing that there's nobody else, unless I'm wrong, no, okay, a bunch of heads were shaking there, seeing that there's nobody else coming forward, then we'll close the delegation portion of our hearing or of our meeting. We move through public hearings, of which we have none, unfinished business of which we have none, and we'll move into reports and item 8.1, the Northwest Area Structure Plan Amendment and the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan Amendments. And I'll look to administration for an introduction. Mr. Welton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is to give first reading to two amendments, one to the Northwest Area Structure Plan and the second to the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan and to set the public hearing date and time. When the province identified that the Grand Prairie Regional College land west of 108 Street was to be the location for the hospital, it identified a new access off 108 Street. That access was not considered in any of the city's transportation plans, and so council deleted the transportation networks from the Northwest Area Structure Plan and Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan while a new road network was being developed. Council has adopted the new road network and directed planning and development to come back with amendments to these area structure plans to put the road network back into both of those ASPs. Although the changes to the area structure plans were intended to be as minimal as possible, we did our proposing three small changes, which are identified in your report. Council is required to hold a public hearing before giving amendments to a statutory plan in a second and third reading, and advertising of the public hearing will be undertaken. And the proposed amendments would establish the approved road network into the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan and the Northwest Area Structure Plan. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much. Mr. Welton?
Counselor Rice? I move first reading of bylaw C-1106-04 being an amendment to the Northwest Area Structure Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So on a first reading of a bylaw, just to get it sort of on the record, there's no discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice?
I move first reading of bylaw C-1028D being an amendment to the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Again, no discussion or debate on first reading of a public hearing. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and Counselor Rice finally date and time.
I move that Monday, April 6th, 2015, at 6:30 PM at city council chambers be established as the date, time, and location for the public hearings.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate as to the proposed date, time, and location? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. So for those two changes to the plans in the Northwest area and the Hidden Valley area, the public hearings have been set, and so there will be a period of notification to the public, so that anybody wishes to comment on those has ample time, so they know that they can come forward to those public hearings. Thanks very much, Mr. Welton, for introducing those for us. We move into committee business and 9.1, the Corporate Services Committee, and Counselor Logan, I think that was your meeting, wasn't it?
I'm sure that it was. Community growth is O'Toole.
Counselor O'Toole, did you handle that, where you were at that meeting, Mr. Chair? Yes.
Yeah.
BRZ? Well, Counselor Logan, if you can handle it, I know you can.
I can just make it up as I go?
Sure.
Okay, then I would move that council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting of January 20th.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? No, I just want to clarify, actually, Counselor Logan, you know what? My mistake for not giving you a little bit more direction there. This is actually the Business Revitalization Zone Review. It came from that committee meeting, but I think the BRZ has had their AGM, it's announced back for final approval. So with that bit of information, Counselor Rice?
Then I'll declare conflict and leave the chambers as that's my employer.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Sorry, Counselor Logan, for setting you up there on that. So I guess there was just that one piece of business that was a leftover from that meeting, I guess, after the public notification. So if you'd like to carry on?
I'm not 100% sure, because this is the time that there may be presentations from the public, is it? The review? I'm sorry, I did miss that meeting, so I'm not 100% sure how to proceed.
Well, this is the date, time, and location that was announced for delegations to appear. It had been at the Downtown Association AGM and advertised there through their members. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything additional on it?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Typically, the Downtown Association would send a board member to tonight's meeting. Unfortunately, they could not attend, so if there was any questions, I would try to answer them, but typically, that would be the process where they would be a delegation and take any questions on council about the budget for the BRZ. But since they're not, I mean, they did deal with it at their AGM.
Yeah, and so if they were coming as a delegation, though, it wouldn't be at the agenda, and it would have been at the delegation stage. Okay, so I think we're okay there, Counselor Logan. If we'd like to just move the approval of the BRZ?
Yes, that would seem to be the obvious thing to do. I'd move that council approve the BRZ's own budget.
As presented, okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Thanks for clearing that through for us. Any discussion or debate on the motion? As we heard, this has been circulated to the BRZ members. Counselor McLean?
Hey, Mayor Given. I think it's just protocol, what I've seen over the years, and we know the Downtown Association has many, many activities, the Santa Claus Parade, Canada Day Parade, the flowers, staffing. This is all a bit meshed together, so just let everybody know that this is what this is all about.
Thank you. Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. If you can invite back Counselor Rice. Okay, thanks. Thanks again, Counselor Logan, for handling that bit of unusual business, or the way we had it on our agenda was unusual anyways. So we'll move to 9.2, the Community Growth Committee meeting from February 10th. And I just want to clarify, Counselor O'Toole, just looking at our list there, 9.2.1 is actually a waiver of fees. I think that's another piece of leftover business, isn't it?
I can explain that, Mayor Given. On February 10th, we had a meeting, Community Growth, and we had a waiver of fees request and securities from Development Permit PL-141217, which is the community outreach facility located at 10105, 102nd Street, which happens to be the Catholic Family Social, Catholic Family Services Society of Grand Prairie. At that particular time, we made a recommendation through the committee. We thought that that was where it had to end, and we find that our, it needs to be approved by city council, so that's why we're here, and it wasn't on the agenda for the last meeting. So I'll just, I move the council approve the request for the waiver of fees, levies, and securities for Development Permit PL-141217, which is the community outreach facility amounting to $24,550, subject to conditions as indicated in the Appendix 1 of Policy 607.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor McLean?
Just ask Counselor O'Toole a quick question. This is for the new building they're building for their offices and everything that they're going to have downtown.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And you have another Community Growth Committee meeting, this time with minutes.
Yes. I move the council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee meeting held February 24th, 2015.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we've got to catch? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote to adopt them. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
I have one recommendation. We had from Water North Coalition. They requested a council appointment to this board, so I move the council appoint one of its members to the Water North Coalition.
Sure, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
Who are these people? Don't we already belong to a watershed thing and several other water things? And like, we can't just join up for every group that comes along? Like, I never heard of these people.
Sure, I see Ms. Gardner has joined us at the table, can probably shed some light. And that's actually Counselor Rice, our typical process for appointing people is a mayor's recommendation, and that's why there isn't a name here. I haven't talked to council, because I want to see first if we're going to decide to do it, and then we'll discuss who might do that. But Ms. Gardner, would you like to speak to who the Water North Coalition is?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The Water North Coalition is a group of municipalities, First Nation communities and Native Nations communities, that are working towards advocating for built-in-the-north solutions, primarily on infrastructure, on water, wastewater, and the need for training and staffing. And that, and it's north, not just northern, like the northwestern, it also incorporates northeastern municipalities as well.
Counsel Rice, go ahead.
So Grand Prairie is obviously under very different regulations and requirements than the rest of the northern municipalities. Like, we are so closely regulated on our water treatment and testing and all that sort of stuff, so I'm not sure I see any value to us being part of this association. How much would it cost a year? We don't have any of that information.
Ms. Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor Given. At this time, there is no cost to being part of this other than travel time or staff time. The FIDA is covering all of the administration support, so that is being provided by them, as well as conference calls, those kinds of items. At each community, there's quarterly meetings, and communities are asked to also help host. So if that was happening here, I'd anticipate that it would be done primarily through the Water North Week, that Aquatera hosts, and Aquatera would be the host.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. If this vote carries, then I would poll councilmembers who might have an area of interest, and then at a subsequent meeting, we'd appoint that person. But that's if it passed. Any, sorry, seeing no further discussion or debate, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So we move on to, sorry, Counselor O'Toole, anything further that you wanted to highlight from the meeting?
In that meeting, we also had an application for development permit in the Swan Haven area. Because it didn't fit into the structure plan of that area, redevelopment plan, it was not received, is denied. We also had a little debate on privately-owned signs on public property. We couldn't come up with a conclusion at that point in time, and we are meeting tomorrow to finish off the debate possibly, or at least carry on the debate. And that is all I have, Mayor Given.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. We move on to 9.4, the Community Living Committee. Counselor Clayton, I think you're going to handle that one for Counselor Radburn. It's not here.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held February 24th, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions we have to catch and change? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote to adopt them as is. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. There was just one point of business there. The youth council presented to committee, Community Living Committee, and at that time, they made a very informative and really motivating speech on regards to Bill 10, that's currently in front of the province, and there was a, an action came out of that, and that I would move that Mayor Given, that committee recommend that council direct the mayor to write a letter to the local MLAs, the Minister of Education, the Premier of Alberta concerning, sharing the concerns raised by the youth council with respect to Bill 10, which is the Act to amend Alberta Bill of Rights to protect our children.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Clayton, and I think that was a community recommendation to council, so now it's just council direct the mayor. No worries. Thank you. Counselor Rice?
It's written kind of obscurely. I, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, the way the motion is written, what you're supposed to write about, so I assume that you have more detailed information than...
Yeah, the delegation left with the members of the committee information that stated out their concerns in sort of bullet point form, and so we just, we clarified that at the committee of what exactly it was that they wanted us to say, and so we certainly do still have that. So rather than listing paragraphs of concerns, we turned it down to their concerns.
It's the way that one does not adequately protect vulnerable youth. It almost sounds like that's what they're protecting them against, as opposed to asking that that's what be included. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just want to add, you know, although we said that we would, at the committee level, that we would support taking their concerns on to the other levels of government, we really encouraged the youth council and the members there to meet with the MLAs and the government officials themselves. Their voice is very powerful, and we don't have to, you know, just use us as a channel to go through. We really encourage them to make their voice heard through the different channels.
Thanks very much, Counselor Terrence. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton, anything else from that meeting you wanted to bring to our attention?
The Bear Creek outdoor pool options. There was three options that were discussed at the committee level meeting, and in regards to, sorry, there was a motion made that administration will come back with further information regarding these options, so it was a really informative session, and it was sort of a starting point in regards to discussing our options. And then the other item that we discussed and is sort of, was just briefly presented was in regards to transit plan for the region, so thank you.
That's great. Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Thanks for handling that set of minutes in that meeting. We move on to correspondence, and item 10.1, we have correspondence in our package from Aquatera. The Aquatera Board is doing their dividend declaration for 2014, and in order for them to make that declaration, they need to have the unanimous consent of the shareholders. And so in front of council is the motion that's required to allow Aquatera to declare those mandatory dividends and special dividends for the 2014 period. So we'd look for a motion as is listed in our package. Counselor Logan?
Sure, I'd move that we consent to the Board of Aquatera declaring dividends with respect to the corporation's Class D preferred shares, Class F preferred shares, and Class H preferred shares, and providing payment of such dividends on or prior to March 1st, 2015.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Rice?
Need to change the date at all?
Well, I think the, we're just allowing them to pass later. Yeah, I'm not sure, Counselor Rice, I don't know if Ms. Walker would have some input for us, Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Funds were received relating to the dividends last week.
Oh, so if we said no, we'd have to send it back. Okay.[1514.82][1514.82](Laughter)
Ms. Walker, could you inform council? I don't know if you have it at hand, but could you inform council the amount, the total amounts, or the two separate amounts, either way, as the dividends?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The amounts are as per the report that is attached to the agenda. The City of Grand Prairie received mandatory dividends of $1,608,050 and discretionary share dividend of $1,4,565.
Thanks very much, Ms. Walker. Counselor Terrence?
Mayor Given, just wondering if administration would be able to talk about the discretionary dividends and how those compare to previous years? Is that lower or higher?
Ms. Walker, please speak to that?
Thank you, Mayor Given. It is very similar to what we received in 2014, just a little bit more, and I don't have that amount.
If I remember correctly, 2014 was significantly higher than previous years, as the Aquatera Board has set some targets on what they'd like to be able to do for their shareholders in terms of dividends, and 2014 was the first year that they started to move in the forward direction that they're looking for. So I think this is relatively close to 2014, but 2014 was significantly higher than previous years. Any other discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that handles all of our correspondence items. We did have one delegation this afternoon, this evening. We could have maybe a motion to receive that for information. Counselor Rice?
I move that we receive the presentation from Katie for information.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Thanks very much, Katie, for coming and livening up our agenda. We appreciate it. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We had no notices of motion today, and so that would take us into council member reports. We'll start with a report from the Senate 2000 Board. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Last meeting we had, I made a report, and I just want to clarify a couple things, just so everybody's on board. I made mention that the main reception area will not be taking bookings for the events in the evenings between May long weekend through September long weekend. At this time, the tourism center is open late. But I did forget to mention, prior to this time and after the long weekend, business will continue as it has in the past. And yes, we are still taking bookings during this time, just not weddings. This was my fault and not any of the media that maybe made it come across that way, so I'm bringing it back up to par, so everybody understands.
Absolutely, thanks for clarifying that. I think you also had Grand Prairie Airport Commission, Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, we had our meeting here just last week, and on the agenda was the audited financial statements, which we need to go through every year like any other business, and we had a report on a matrix. When we were looking at people to sit on boards, we've always picked and tried to find people that had an area of expertise. We've never really had it written on paper, and we're going through a program now, or going through and trying to make a kind of a policy or best practice, and we're just working with the board and working with the airport CEO to make sure that this goes through in a timely manner. And we also had an update of operations, and I can tell you that even when the economy And we also had an update of operations. And I can tell you that even when the economy is a little slower and other airports aren't, seem to be as busy as they have been in the past, the Grand Prairie Airport's still got a, a very good increase in traffic. So that's a good thing. That's my airport commission.
Absolutely. Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Councillor Clayton, you had Grand Prairie Sports Council?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also have another one, if there's time, that I forgot to mention prior. First, I'd like to present about an event that happened this past Saturday, the Alberta, the Northwest Alberta Sports Excellence Awards. It's held by the Grand Prairie Sport Council, that the city is a partner with the county on, as well as with Alberta Sport Development Center Northwest Division. It was the first annual event by these two organizations. It was very well attended. Over two hundred people attended this great event that was really a night of celebration. I just wanted to quickly highlight the winners, if I could. And they're truly people that represent our community in many cities and races across the province, as well as across the country. And they're truly people that we should be proud of as, as being part of our community. As Female Athlete of the Year, Morrell Martins is a cross-country runner from GPRC. For Male Athlete of the Year, Ryan Rosnowski, who's a swimmer, and specifically in the butterfly stroke, he won a lot of medals this year, so we're very proud of him. Coach of the Year was Bill Cochrane, the GPRC cross-country coach. And Female Team of the Year, sort of hand and ham at that, was GPRC Wolves Cross Country Running Team. The Ma- Male Team of the Year was Saint Joe's Catholic, or sorry, Saint Joe's Catholic Celtics Football Team. So those guys had a fifteen and oh season, so it was ver- very great season for them. And it was the second time only that they had ever attended the big provincial tournament that they were so happy to win. Sport Builder of the Year was Grand, was from Grand Prairie Minor Hockey Association, the Executive Director, Lorna LeBlanc. And the Unsung Hero, who's the Volunteer of the Year, was from the Grand Prairie Skating Club, was President Chantelle Durkach. So it was a great evening, and everybody was thoroughly energized. I also wanted to mention one other, other organization, who was the organization that sort of was the Unsung Group of the Year, the community supporter, and went to the, the ski patrol that is at Nighthawk every year. And I especially wanted to say congratulations to our own Director of Community Living, Gary Roth. So thank you for, for the work that you do with that organization, Gary, and thank you to that organization for keeping everybody safe. So that was my one report. The other report I had was in regards to, we had a meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Committee. It was a great meeting. We had representation from many different business sectors in the community. It was well attended. Everybody was there that had been invited, so that was nice to see. And we had great discussions about current economic development activity as well as future. So I wanted to thank Brian Glevin, our Economic Development Officer, for putting that group together. It's very well represented, so thank you to him.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton. And back to councillor O'Toole. It's all on that side of the table tonight. Councillor O'Toole, you had the, that's right, that, well, not to say that the other side of the table hasn't been working too, right? But you had Philip J. Curry, Dinosaur Museum.
Yes, thanks very much. We had a meeting here just on the twenty-fourth. Since started the building, we've had thirty meetings. And I just wanna give you an update. We did three change orders. Usually that costs the museum some money. But we're actually getting money back, so that's, that's a good thing. Also, the inside development is going as planned. All the projects are being built as we speak. And you should be seeing some transportation signs on the highway near Wembley regarding the museum coming up soon. That's not a big update, but it is an update.
Great. Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Were there any other reports from external agencies, boards, or commissions that I didn't highlight or didn't catch ahead of the meeting? Seeing none, then we'll start with councillor Thiessen for council roundtable.
It's 'cause I went long last week, eh?
We'll start you off this time, so.
Yeah, start me off, so there's a little pressure. We've still got the rest of the crew to do. Actually, I've been quite busy this last two weeks, but I'm only gonna highlight one event. I've got a full page worth of stuff that is gonna, has already hit Terry's email here. But one, the event that I wanted to highlight was this weekend's Spirit Seekers Conference. Sixteenth Annual Youth Aboriginal Conference and Role Model Award Ceremony. They'd asked me to deliver a keynote speech for them at the end of their opening ceremonies, as well as take part in the Evolution of Dance. So if you didn't know that council could dance, if you were there, you would know that at least one councillor can kinda dance. But I was really honored to be a part of that event, especially recognizing and, and supporting Aboriginal youth as to finding their way in the world and to empowering them to become better citizens within our community and their communities. I was especially honored to be a part and give, give, I guess, recognition to the event on behalf of the mayor and city council at the Role Model Awards, and seeing how many young Aboriginal youth role models that we have out there was, was quite exhilarating, actually, just to be a part of that. So kudos to Delain Lambert-English and the Friendship Center and Grand Prairie Regional College for putting together fabulous events. That's only doing good things for our future here in the Peace Region.
Thanks councillor Thiessen. Councillor Logan?
Only one item to mention that hasn't been a part of the agenda up to this point, and that was residing at a Development Appeal Board on February twenty-fifth. It was concerned, an item that I had observed with the Community Growth Committee. And it was, there was no appellant that showed up. So we went through the motion of, of having a committee, but of course, there was nobody to argue for the change. That's the only one.
Okay. Thanks very much councillor Logan. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just wanted to speak to, we had council retreat in Edmonton last week, from the third to the sixth, of getting there. I'd like to take the word treat out of the retreat, because it's a lot of hard work and planning for the future. And, but I did find this one to be the best that I've participated in.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Councillor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanna highlight one event I was at on the twenty-eighth. The Ase Afa had the Maple Sugar Festival, and it was a wonderful event, very well attended. There was not a parking space left in Musquesseepe, and there was parking up along the roads. And it's, it's incredible how many, you know, French-speaking people we actually have in our community. And I had a good chat with the director of Ase Afa, Michelle, and, and she was very excited for, for the opportunity that we have to take part in the francophone network that's coming up. And she's looking forward to being part of that and then being part of those discussions. So a great event, well-attended. I'll just wanna also, you know, echo councillor McLean's sentiments that, you know, the retreat we had last week, I think it was a great time to get together as a council and to really review our priorities. And I think we've got some great things coming forward, and I look forward to, to the next year holds.
Thanks very much councillor Tarrant. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just had two other items in addition to what the rest of council had mentioned. I had a Nighthawk Board Meeting on February twenty-fifth that was very well-attended. And just a quick comment, that Nighthawk still has great snow. It's spring skiing right now. I was out there yesterday. And they're going full gangbusters, so if you have an opportunity to get out there before the snow is gone. And I, I failed to mention two winners from Saturday. I feel I'd like to mention, the Developmental Coach of the Year was Jeffrey Fertini, and he's, focuses on youth in volleyball. And the outstanding official was Marty Tiestat, so congratulations to them as well. And other than that, in regards to my roundtable, I have nothing to add, other than I thoroughly just enjoyed the discussions of our couns- council strategic planning in Edmonton, so thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. I did attend the Alberta, Northwest Alberta Sports Excellence Awards. And I did feel that it was a great awards program, a great event. There was a number of teams that, as far as I'm concerned, were all winners, but somebody brought home the trophy. And they included members of teams from all over Northwest Alberta. The other one I wanna bring up, and I did many this week and last week. This one here is the Northern Alberta Mayors and Rees Caucus. It was held in Edmonton. Dawn Iverson chaired the meeting. There was a report on 211, and you're probably wondering what 211 is. I'll give you a short update. It is a free confidential multilingual twenty-four-hour information referral system for thousands of community and social services available across the province. 211 benefits the public by making it simple and easy to navigate the complex maze of community, health, and government and social service information. It is, it is both a telephone and online service. But we look to work to bring 211 across the province. The service is currently only available in some regions. So we had a presentation on that. We also had a presentation on Alberta's industrial heartland, and which is around the Edmonton area. We had two updates from communities, you know, what's going on in the community type thing. One was from High Prairie, and we had the mayor, Linda Cox, and she did about a thirty-minute presentation. And also the mayor from St. Paul, Mayor Glenn Anderson, also did that and highlighted the, the area around and in St. Paul. We discussed tourism with the Alberta President and CEO, Royce Chin. And there was also Alberta Budget Update by Diana McQueen, Minister of Municipal Affairs. And, yeah. It was a long day.
That's got it?
That's got her.
That was all in one day?
Yeah. Early day and a late night.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Councillor Rice?
I would echo some of the other comments. I think the strategic planning session was very productive. Wasn't always fun. But I think the end result was well worth it. I was pleased to have a brief telephone meeting with Minister McQueen, who advised that she, the province had freed up four hundred million dollars out of this year's surplus to municipalities. But she did kind of advise, don't run out and spend it, 'cause the budget's gonna be tight. So I think we'll probably see a decrease in the MSI funding in the budget. So at least the surplus will offset some of that. So I was pleased about that. According to my calculations, that will, Grand Prairie share will be about four point eight million. So Ms. Walker can run off and put that in the bank very shortly, so.
Just on the Aquatara discussion, maybe she already has.
That's all I have.
Thanks very much councillor Rice, and thanks council members for their reports. I just wanna highlight one item, actually, sorry, two items that hadn't been previously discussed. I was here with a number of other members of council on Friday the twenty-seventh to take part in the Alberta Emergency Services Metal Presentations. This is actually, I think, spearheaded by the provincial government, as they recognize emergency services personnel across the province. So our two MLAs were here to award two of our Grand Prairie Fire Department firefighter teams with awards. And we took that opportunity to make awards for a number of in-house recognitions. And so I was pleased to do that with the fire chiefs, Chief Lamu and the others, to recognize the excellence of our fire service. And then also, council members mentioned the planning session and retreat in Edmonton. I just wanted to highlight a couple of other little pieces of that. On the Tuesday, just prior to us getting started, I had an opportunity to meet with representatives from Enbridge. I had an opportunity to discuss with them, not the Gateway, Northern Gateway Pipeline, which we've had discussions with in the past, but more about their existing infrastructure in our region, and just a little bit of understanding about how, how the world works for pipeline owners. And then I also wanted to recognize the community partners who took part in our event in Edmonton. Council hosted a Grand Prairie Day mixer, and we had an excellent turnout from a number of people in the development community and the real estate community and investment community. And I wanted to recognize the community partners who went with us. Now, also, I'm gonna try and do it off the top of my head, and so don't let me forget anybody if it's obvious. But we had the Grand Prairie Public School Board, Grand Prairie Catholic School Board, the Chamber of Commerce, Grand Prairie Regional College, Grand Prairie Home Builders Association, and representatives of industry, essentially Seven Generations Energy came. And that delegation was there to let those in the capital region, who might not be aware of the economic activity and the strength and just the nature of Grand Prairie community, let them know a little bit more about it. And I have to say that I think it was very effective, and I don't think it would have been as effective if we didn't have all those community partners. So I wanna thank them for their commitment to coming down and helping us represent and really sell our region. With that, I have nothing left, and our meeting would be adjourned.